Welcome to On the Ballot with Ballopedia, where we take a closer look at the top political stories of the day. Ballopedia connects people to politics by providing neutral, nonpartisan, and reliable information on our government, how it works, and where it's headed. I'm staff writer Doug Kronizel, filling in for our host Victoria Rose. Thanks for being with us. Today, we're joined by Peru Shah, who's a political science professor at the University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee, and former president of the Shorewood School Board. Peru, I connected a few months back about her research related to contested school board races in Wisconsin. And I've really been looking forward to this interview for a while. She's interviewed regularly by the media on all issues related to Wisconsin politics. And her research has been published in scholarly journals, such as the American Journal of Political Science, the Journal of Politics, Political Research Quarterly, and the Journal of Race, Ethnicity, and Politics. Peru, thanks for coming on the show.
Thanks for having me. I'm excited about this conversation.
I am too. And I know we were talking about this beforehand, but I'm letting the listeners know that I'm going to try to keep my, my school board geeking out level at, at an appropriate level so that everyone can follow along with what's sure to be a really interesting conversation. And I'm sure as somebody who's kind of had their head deep in this, you're well versed in, in that, in that line of thinking as well.
Yes, definitely.
Well, we're going to be spending a bulk of our time digging into some of the research that you conducted related to the nationalization of school board elections and these contested races you researched in Wisconsin. But I was wondering if you could start by telling us a little bit about what led you to tackle this research?
Sure. So you mentioned that I was a school board president for the Shorewood School Board here in Wisconsin. And I did that for 10 years. And it included the COVID years, as we call them, right? 2019 through 20, I guess now. And one of the things that I really recognized, and I think your research, your, the Ballopedia's kind of collection of the data around what you called conflict elections, was how COVID essentially really changed what was happening, both substantively, like as we had discussions at school boards. But I also think that it changed who ran for office, who won, and the kinds of issues people were running on. So when I started in 2013, you know, I would say most of the people, first of all, people weren't running for school board elections, right? There were so many elections in Wisconsin and across the country where there would be open seats or people begging folks in their, in their community to run because nobody would run. And it's a difficult job and it more or less pays nothing. But I think it was also always seen as something that, you know, anybody could do, right? Like, or nobody wanted to do. And then COVID hits and people are paying attention to elections again. And all of a sudden, and again, I think your data shows this, there are 15 people running for one seat in one community. I mean, unheard of kind of competition. And so as somebody who studies elections, I was really interested to know more about like who these people were and what they were running on.
And was this something that you saw specifically in your experience at Shorewood? Like, what was your experience on that board during what you called the COVID years? When all this kind of very intense focus is all of a sudden turned on a school boards? What was that like personally in your community?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that what we saw was, because we all went virtual in terms of the meetings, that there were just, was a lot more participation, which I think is a good thing, right? Like, as somebody who believes in democracy with a small d, I think more people paying attention to what's happening in local government is important. And so I think that was important. But I think what we also saw was a lot more anger directed at school board members, anger about a situation that all of us were facing that, you know, we couldn't really blame anybody for. And so that anger essentially then, I think, manifests itself in some folks saying like, I could do this better. I could do it differently. Again, I think those are positive things. But it was following some of the trends that we were seeing, I think nationally, around the skepticism and anxiety and distrust of government in a way that I think would be unhealthy. In Shorewood, which is a, you know, for, you know, people who don't know, is a pretty, I would say, you know, liberal progressive community. We didn't have as much of the folks running for office or contesting elections. But there were, I mean, I would say that before COVID, let's say 10 to 15 people max showing up for a school board meeting. During COVID, on those online meetings, 500 people showing up. You know, and this is a school district of 2,000 students. So, you know, that's a quarter of the parents showing up. So it was a significant number of people.
We often talk about, or I guess I jokingly refer to like the 7:00 PM meetings and like the auditorium or something like that with like four people there and two are asleep in their chairs or something along those lines. But apart from the experience in that moment in particular, when, when we talk about school boards at Ballopedia, we can be talking about school boards all over the country. And as I'm sure you are well aware, what a school board does in Oklahoma is very different than what a school board might do in Georgia, what a school board might do in, you know, anywhere else. So in, in Wisconsin, what role does the school board play? Or sort of what responsibilities does a school board member have there in kind of overseeing the school district and setting policy?
So Wisconsin, I think, in general, believes pretty strongly in local control and tries to, I mean, there's been debates around, you know, like how much the state should mandate certain things. But school boards are responsible for setting the budget, ensuring that we stay within that budget, hiring the superintendent, who then, you know, often hires all the other leadership in that district, deciding on curriculum, deciding on class sizes. You know, during COVID, it was deciding, are we going back? Are we not? Are we requiring masks? Are we not? You know, so a lot of the policy decisions that I think affect students day to day. And, you know, again, all these were happening before, right? Like, it wasn't like people weren't making those decisions about who should be teaching a class, what kind of curriculum we should be using. But I think people all of a sudden just, I think the idea of going back and not going back and masking kind of elevated people's interest in what was happening at the school board.
Yeah, definitely, especially as it pertains to just sort of like, if they're not going back, then they're at home. And all of the kind of logistics that go into, into that decision-making process.
I think one of the difficulties in a, I mean, I think there's a lot of positives to local control, definitely, right? I do think that there's reason to think that different school districts should make different decisions. But what ended up happening as a result of that is, for example, if we were staying in mass, like the community next door to us could be going back to school. The private school within Shorewood could also be going back to school. And so, you know, everybody was kind of watching different school districts make different decisions. And, you know, with hindsight, we could say that the outcomes were almost the same, regardless if you went back to school full time versus virtually versus hybrid, regardless if you required masking. But at the time, we didn't know that. And so I think there was, again, a lot of anxiety and frustration about just different decisions being made.
Well, I mean, I was obviously with all of that in mind and, and kind of the, the attention that that was putting on this. And like you mentioned at Ballopedia, for us, the kind of trigger for us was seeing a lot of recalls in 2021. There were, it was like a huge spike in the number of recall efforts against school board members. It was the first time in, we've been recording data for over a decade. It was the first time that school board recalls made up that large of a percentage of all recalls that we covered in the country. And so kind of turning to this work that you're doing, this research that you were doing, I was obviously quite intrigued by all of it, not only because I find it inherently interesting, but also because what we were talking about earlier with kind of the research that Ballopedia did that, that fed into, that fed into this topic. And listeners have heard me come on and talk about these school board elections and issues at play more than a few times at this point. But your research really digs into these elections in Wisconsin and does so with a level of statistical rigor that you'd expect from academic research. So as we jump into this, could you just walk us through some of the terms and definitions you used as sort of a refresher for our listeners? You know, I see things like what we're talking about conflict elections and conflict candidates. What do those terms mean in your research?
I mean, actually, you would probably be better to define those terms than I would, since we took that from Ballopedia. You know, I think it's, it's difficult because, you know, I started off thinking about this as being, I might have used the word at one point when I was thinking about this as undemocratic. But it's not because I don't, I guess what was hard about this is that we want, I think, it's not because people are participating more that it's a problem. It's not because that there's, you know, different people participating. That's the problem, is that there's this, a kind of underlying feeling that what is happening currently is a problem, which again, in and of itself isn't the issue, but that, that the problem lies with kind of the, attaches itself to some of these other kind of national kind of issues that are happening around distrust of government. And not because the government, there's any evidence that the government was doing something that, you know, should, should lead you to distrust them, but this like kind of underlying feeling that you can't trust people in office, that those people are not like you. And so, I mean, I would, you know, I don't know if you want to answer this question, but I mean, I like, we ended up using conflict because, well, you used it. And I thought like, it was a good way to kind of get at this idea of, of trying to think about like how the, those candidates and those issues were attempting to essentially kind of disrupt, right?
Sure.
What was happening.
Like get, get a, get an idea. And yeah, because when we started seeing the recalls, obviously COVID was, was a big one, one of the big kind of conflict topics that we centered on. It's like the mask requirements and things like that. But then you, you also started to see, you know, the topics of the race and education, critical race theory conversations around that. We, we started to see sex and gender conversations kind of pop up a little bit more, more recently. It's kind of picked up steam. And then, and your research also focused on kind of the broader sort of parents' rights and transparency and things along those lines. And one of the things that kind of, as, as we've looked at these elections that stood out to me is that, in my memory, you know, I remember back when Common Core was a big topic and everyone was talking about Common Core. And it kind of, you know, it made its way into congressional elections. And you had candidates for offices that were not school boards talking about this very kind of school-focused policy. But with that topic, you know, it, at the end of the day, it really just kind of centered on, on what's happening in schools. Whereas with these other conflict topics, they, they kind of, they do speak to things that are happening in schools because they deal with things like masks in schools and curriculum decisions and books in libraries, so all tied to schools. But they also sort of speak to these larger cultural and societal issues in a way that something like Common Core really didn't. People took their sides on that, but at the end of the day, it was very much an education policy, whereas these, these new topics are kind of beyond that. And is that kind of the, the nationalization aspect that you, that you've seen in these board elections?
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, traditionally and, you know, across Wisconsin, school board elections are nonpartisan. This should be actually something I look forward to. Ballopedia collecting this information because there's this really interesting kind of phenomenon happening now where there's specific districts now across the country that are switching to partisan elections.
Florida is going to have a constitutional amendment or something like that where they get a decide. Yeah, and Tennessee just did it. Tennessee was the most recent state to do it. So yeah, it is definitely a trend that's picking up the partisan elections for school boards.
Yeah, and it's fascinating because I think when you go, like, I, one of the things I teach is urban politics and, you know, urban reformers always felt that local politics should be nonpartisan, that the ideas that, of what's best for a community or what's best for a school district is not related to partisan politics, right? That no matter what your partisan preferences are, you want the best for your kids in school. And I think that's still true, right? But what this nationalization has shown is that some of these national political divisive topics, like critical race theory, like, and you know, more broadly, DEI initiatives now, like transgender rights, like this idea of transparency or parental rights, which is this kind of, I think, code for, you know, less government, right? And more parent control, right?
That term in particular has presented us with some, a lot of internal conversations of sort of like, what do we, what do we make of this? You know, a person who has liberal viewpoints on education could say it the same way that a person who has conservative viewpoints could say it, but they'd both be meaning totally different things when they use this term, which is difficult for us to work with as kind of, you know, trying to keep the, be able to describe things in a way that kind of cuts through the kind of bias when there's just something implicit in there that nobody's actually saying, but everybody's hearing. It's definitely a unique aspect of this.
And that again ties it to this national conversation, right? Because those talking points are coming from people running for governor, people running from Congress, from Congress, you know, conversations about higher ed, right? Like, all of those things are happening. And then you see those same conversations happening at the school board level, where you could argue that for the most part, none of those things are really going to play out K through 12, right? I mean, to be fair, I think most school districts in Wisconsin are doing what people want, which is focused on reading, math, science, and, you know, maybe mental health, right? Like, the things that are actually happening on the ground don't really follow any of those things. But those talking points get people activated in a way. And so I think that's the kind of the, the nationalization part that we were trying to get at, because there is this kind of broader trend of local politics mimicking or mirroring what's happening at the national level.
Well, and, and when we're talking about the, the kind of the nonpartisan nature of school board elections, they are officially not, in most states, they're nonpartisan, no party labels on the ballot for most school board candidates and anywhere you look. And your research kind of came to two really key points in terms of these conflict elections and these conflict candidates, you know, the candidates who oppose things like critical race theory, masks requirements, things like that. In your research, you've settled on these two points. One was a racial aspect and one was a partisan, a political aspect. And these are really kind of the interesting why and how factors. So why are these conflict elections happening in one place and not in another? And how are the characteristics in these communities affecting the overall outcome of these elections? And since we've kind of been talking about the partisan aspect of it, could you tell us a little bit more about what you found in your research in terms of how kind of the political makeup of a community affected these elections? And I guess we didn't really set the, the timeframe is what, what we were looking at. These, these are Wisconsin school board elections in 2022, so last year. Yeah, so what, what did you find in terms of that political aspect in these elections?
Yeah, so our, one of our hypotheses was that, you know, again, because I was, I came to this as somebody who was kind of watching this happen. I live in Shorewood and I can see what's happening in the communities around me. And so one of the things that we wanted to look at was, how did the partisan kind of makeup of a community influence essentially the likelihood that a candidate who might run on these kinds of issues would run and whether or not they would win? And so, you know, as you said, I don't know, I don't know if there's like, you could say that there's a strong, like a hard Republican or Democratic focus on these, as you mentioned, right? Like this idea of parent transparency could go, could be talked about in a lot of different ways. But some of the ways in which we were seeing the nationalization around particularly CRT and transgender rights and kind of distrust of government was happening amongst Republican candidates at other levels of office. So we wanted to see if like support for Trump in the 2020 elections essentially influenced the likelihood of these candidates running. And so that ended up being significant and important.
Meaning if a county more strongly voted for Donald Trump in 2020, it was more likely that a conflict election in the school board would, would be, would be found there and that the conflict candidate would, would win?
Yes.
There as well? That's fascinating. And, and I feel like I sound like Captain Obvious when I say that that's fascinating, because like, oh, yeah, like the district that is, votes more strongly for the Republican candidate is more likely to elect the conservative school board member. Like, duh, Doug, like, that's not, that's not super interesting. But I think with, with the nonpartisan aspect of these elections, it is really interesting. Because, you know, these school board members, like we said, they're not on the ballot with a party label next to their name. The only way that they're able to kind of signal what they believe is like by saying it, like that you have to, you have to go out and you have to find voters and you have to tell them, hello, I am X, Y, Z. I'm running for school board. These are the things that I believe. And it seems like these conflict topics have provided candidates with a pretty straightforward way to convey that message. Like, you, you can say, you know, I oppose mask requirements or I support mask requirements. And that like carries a political connotation with it that a voter will then hear and then be like, okay, I'm seeing a D next to your name or an R next to your name now, rather than nothing next to your name, which is super interesting, I think.
I mean, I will say this, your dataset, which again, I think is rich with things that we haven't been able to kind of tap yet, also collected. So, you know, I think one of the other things that has happened in local elections is that the shrinking of local newspapers or any sort of local coverage significantly influences how people understand who's running for office. So again, you know, somebody who studies elections, you know, I have gone to the, my own, I've gone to the voting booth myself and seen, you know, I don't know, all these judges running. And I had to go back and actually check. Like, I have no information about that. There's nobody sending me information. There's nowhere on a newspaper for me to look. So the low, the low information environment also kind of creates this opportunity for people to come in and essentially provide the kind of information they want to, right? That can be pretty persuasive. So one of the things that you have in your dataset is kind of links to these candidate profiles that some of these, I don't even know if you would call them local newspapers. They're, I guess, like online newspapers, like the Pats and things like that.
Yeah, the Patch is kind of like all over the place. And they always have these profiles where people can say, why are you running?
Yeah, and people were, and to your point, people are subtle. Like, it's not like, I mean, it's, it's unlikely that somebody's going to go in there and say like, I don't like transgender kids. Like, they're just not going to do that, right? So there's all this kind of, like more kind of ambiguous language being used that you kind of have to go through and figure out. So that, we haven't actually had a chance to look at yet. The other piece that you guys, I think, collected, or maybe we started collecting, was there's a lot of outside money coming into these elections now, which is also unheard of.
That would be you, but that's something that we're, we're super interested in.
Yeah, no, me too. Because it's, again, I mean, so every time I ran for school board, I probably spent, I don't know, I probably raised $5,000. I mean, it wasn't a lot of money, maybe even less after the first time, you know?
Buy some signs.
Right.
Buy some mailers.
Yeah. And now, I mean, I think Rebecca Clayfish supported some candidates.
Oh, sure. Being the former lieutenant governor of Wisconsin, who actually endorsed a large number of school board candidates in Wisconsin.
She herself is a Republican. It's unheard of. It's unheard of, right? And so understanding the impact of that, right? So if I'm only collecting $5,000, but then this other candidate gets $10,000. I mean, again, because it's low information environment, they get to send out potentially more mailers. I mean, there's no like TV debate or anything like that. But there's other ways in which essentially you're just getting your name, the name recognition out there. And so, you know, I think that also has this kind of significant influence on who decides to run. So when we were looking at the Trump vote, we were also using that essentially as a proxy for an opportunity district where people said to themselves, who either, you know, work for Moms for Liberty or somebody else, like, oh, wait, this is a district that potentially, that those kinds of campaign messages would work.
So like if an outside group was wanting to support candidates, they would kind of look at the places where, you know, you wouldn't be throwing your money away. In the example that you bring up with Moms for Liberty, the conservative organization that focuses a lot on school board elections, they probably wouldn't want to spend a lot of money trying to flip a school board seat in Milwaukee, because that would be very hard for them to do. But then if there is a, a county that has that more favorable, so it's kind of, yeah, it's, it's kind of the chicken and the egg sort of thing. Like, you know, a group might see an opportunity and go for it, but also the district itself is, is kind of more likely to, to see that outcome that you'd expect.
Exactly.
Kind of the focus on, on a lot of the, these, these partisan topics. I mean, you know, we were talking about how these issues, these conflict topics provide like a really easy way for people to signal, like, I am this or I am that. Technically though, like 10 years ago, before kind of these topics really popped up, a person could have just gone out and said, hey, I'm a Democrat or I'm a Republican, vote for me for the school board. Is that, is that something that, that you've seen? Like, I know a lot of county parties sometimes will endorse school board candidates. Is that something that you've seen kind of more frequently? Like, the willingness of a political party to jump into these school board elections? Because like, they could have been doing it 20 years ago. The, the county Democrats and Republicans could have been out there knocking on doors saying, hey, vote for this candidate. They're a good party candidate. It'll be great. Is that something that's happening more often now?
I think it depends. I mean, I think in Wisconsin, you know, I think there's still enough kind of distance between those, right? So, I mean, as somebody who, I mean, I never sought out any of those kinds of endorsements. And they didn't really do it at the, at that, at the local level. But there were other ways in which, you know, candidates, without having specifically like a Republican or Democratic endorsement, could have the endorsement of like a union or.
A group that sort of.
A potential group, yeah.
Sits on one side of the spectrum or the other and kind of, kind of feeds it. And kind of what, what you were saying about, about your, your personal decision not to really seek out those endorsements, that's something that I've, I've seen quite often when I've done school board research are candidates saying, I don't want, like, the candidates themselves are the ones saying, I want to keep this nonpartisan. You know, we don't, we don't need a political party being involved with it. And, and I think that the fact that like more and more people are, are saying that now has to do with, like what you're saying, they kind of push to create a partisan school board election in some places.
Exactly.
Or kind of this, the nationalization of it. You, you still have candidates who are like, I'm, I'm not trying to go one way or the other. This is a nonpartisan office and I'm going to, going to treat it like that. So that, that, that is something that you still see, but amidst this new kind of change that we're seeing as well.
Exactly. And I think that that in part has to do with, you know, I think just kind of how people envision this level of office. And again, kind of going back to the original idea of non, you know, of urban politics or local politics being nonpartisan because the issues surrounding a community, you know, don't, I mean, are meant not to have some sort of partisan or political polarization, right? That, you know, having clean streets and having your garbage collected and having most of your kids graduate from high school, everybody is going to say yes, you know?
Sure. So with the other of your two topics though, you focused on this race and ethnicity characteristic. That is not something that we dove into really, really deeply with, with any of our research that we did in the school boards. And so I'm super interested, and I'm sure our listeners are interested to hear as well, what you found on, on that, what you were looking for when you kind of set out down that path? And then what you ended up finding?
Sure, sure. So there's a long line of research in political science and again, in kind of like urban politics that looks at the ways in which changing racial dynamics influences voters. And for the most part, it creates kind of more uncertainty and less trust. I mean, there's a lot of things happening there, right? But it's essentially this change in kind of the racial composition. And I think there's, again, some other research that says that people like imagine it to be more or less than it actually is. I mean, most places in the course of 10 years are not changing dramatically. But this, there's the feeling of it. So we wanted to include that because there's also, again, a national kind of discourse around, I don't know what I would, how would I would phrase this? Like, I wouldn't say it's a problem, but concern over the changing racial dynamics in the country as a whole, right? And so that narrative is out there. And so again, our hypothesis is really that that creates an opportunity for these candidates to run because of concern or uncertainty around what's happening in the country, what's happening in my school district. And, you know, I think loosely linking this idea that there's these racial dynamics that are essentially influencing the decision-making that's happening. So obviously you see this more, I think, probably around things like CRT or, you know, this whole idea that we have to have more DEI efforts. But even outside of that, it's just this idea that, like this kind of notion of going back to normal or going back to how things were.
The way of life is changing.
Yes, exactly.
And we're kind of looking at the good old days or something along the, like, how, how things used to be, we'd like to get back to there.
Exactly.
Whether or not that actually existed, there's this, like you said, there's this feeling.
Yeah, and I think COVID again, like really made that strong for people, right? Like, you know, you're sitting in these school board meetings and people are like, we just want to go back to, you know, how things were in 2019.
Yeah.
And it's like, okay. So I think that was the other piece of it. We wanted to see if, again, that if there was any kind of relationship between what was happening in community in terms of their racial dynamics and then the likelihood that these candidates would run and win. And again, we found evidence of this, which I think, again, speaks to both, like what's happening at the local level in terms of potentially like fear, but also then that national discourse, that this is something that we should be concerned about and that the people that are in government need to be held accountable or you need to be concerned about what they're doing and how they're addressing this.
With your findings then, you found that, that the change in dynamics, so specifically.
We looked at districts becoming less white.
Okay, so a decrease in a white population in a district correlated with an increase in conflict elections happening? Or, or conflict candidates, or both?
Both, yeah, both again, so.
That kind of strikes me, is it, because like, like you mentioned, with, with kind of the race and education aspect of some of these conversations and some of these conflict topics, it kind of strikes me as maybe a little surprising that, that it would be so the, the white population is decreasing in a community. Does that mean that the population of other racial and ethnic groups is increasing kind of percentage-wise in that community?
Yeah, I mean, but we're talking again about, like, it's not big changes, right? And so I think, again, I would say that this finding is really about the relationship between the fear of change, right?
Sure, yeah.
And then some of these things happening, right? Like, so, I mean, you know, again, as I, I live in a Milwaukee suburb, so you can kind of see some of these dynamics happening here in the counties around Milwaukee. And, you know, so one of the things that we should go back and do in another paper is really look at kind of some of these, kind of the geography of some of these things, because this isn't going to be happening in rural Wisconsin as much, but it's really going to be happening in the suburbs of places of Madison, Milwaukee, Racine, Green Bay, maybe, right? Where there's this kind of changes.
There is population moving in, in general, which can then lead to, lead to that change. Like, if, if a, if a rural district with 500 people stays at 500 people for 10 years, like, you're, you're not gonna be able to even incorporate that or, or, or look at that.
Yeah, and so, like I said, I think it was just bringing in some of the literature that really looks at this idea that we know changing racial dynamics influences kind of trust in government, particularly amongst white voters. So we don't have in our data set, you know, like, we know how, what the percentage of vote, the vote totals were. We don't have probably a really good sense of like who voted in those elections. I think one of the other hard parts about school board elections, as you know, is that, you know, they happen every year here in Wisconsin. For those off-cycle elections, you know, it could be, I mean, you've seen, I've seen this for sure. I'm sure you've seen this too, people winning by two, three votes and like 100 votes total cast, you know?
And I think I have, if I haven't already, I, I'm doing it now. I think I have publicly complained about how hard it is to track down school board election results in Wisconsin, because they're recorded by school district. And so if a school district spans multiple counties, you have to go to like each county, not all of which will publish their results and then add them together to find out who actually won.
I mean, I guess I can speak for me and my colleagues, we're always hoping Ballpedia will like take on this task, because it's a lot.
We do, and it is a lot, but, but yeah, you know, we're out here, we're out here working on it.
This dynamic of, you know, of really low, again, low information and then low voter turnout. So then that means that most likely, and I can, again, speak for Shorewood in particular, the most likely voters are these like high likelihood voters, right? So people who vote in every election, but that's like a certain subset of the population and they tend to be older and whiter, right? So I think that's the other piece of why we thought this kind of like change in racial dynamic might be an interesting way to look at it.
When you were looking at the conflict candidates, so the, the candidates who won, who ran on those platforms that we were describing, did you look at the, the racial and ethnicity makeup of, of those candidates as well? And sort of how, how that might play into it? Or what have you seen in your research with regards to kind of the diversity of candidates running for school boards in, in general? And, and how, and how that affects outcomes?
Yeah, I mean, so I actually wanted, that was the original plan. Like, I really wanted to look, my own research really looks at candidates and candidate emergence. And so I wanted to see who was gonna be running, you know, again, so coding like the race and gender of all the candidates who are running is a little complicated, because it's not like there's an obvious place to get that. And so, you know.
People don't just like say it, like, there's not like a little badge.
Photos or use profiles and things like that. So we started looking a little bit at that. And so I, I don't, I can't say definitively it changed, um, the racial dynamic. And I don't actually know enough about who runs in school board elections in Wisconsin to say it changed the gender dynamic. It definitely, it, it influenced all these kind of like brand new electeds, right? So people who had never run before, who just were compelled by what happened to throw their hat in the race. And so that I did notice, you know, and they often would talk about in their profiles, like, I'm a mom of four kids and I, you know, never thought I'd be involved, but I want to do this now. And, and so I don't know, I mean, I think that's an interesting question that, you know, I think is still open for inquiry.
Another one of these sort of like looking beyond or, or looking broader, I know that your, your focus was just on these elections in Wisconsin in 2022, but they just held elections again, like you said, every year, 2023 just held elections. Do you see any sort of, just kind of in, in seeing those elections in 2023, did you notice anything sort of picking up, kind of taking the foot off the gas, anything changing? Or is it, does it feel like we're sort of just on an increasing trend of this sort of nationalization of these elections?
I didn't do as in-depth kind of analysis of 2023, but my, in reading kind of like what you, what Ballpedia had and then other kind of like newspaper kind of, and kind of media reports, it seems as if verse, like what happened in 2022 during the height of COVID, essentially has, like, I think diminished in terms of the number of people running, the, some of the kind of like strong feelings, particularly around parent, parent control and transparency. But then some of these other issues, like particularly CRT, I think the transgender student conversation. And then, you know, like, I think those kinds of conversations are continuing. And so, but you have fewer candidates actually running. I wonder, one of the things, again, that I would think would be an interesting thing to look at is how, how much now, if there's outside money and outside influencing happening, if they're being more specific in their targeting of particular locations.
So rather than just like kind of a blanket, let's, you know, cast a wide as possible, let's focus on these.
Yeah.
Very specific and particular districts.
We can actually see something flipping, you know? And so there has been districts, school districts that have essentially dramatically shifted. I mean, one of the other things that you guys collect, which again, I think is so fascinating, is the number of times incumbents were losing. I mean, again, never happens.
Like huge numbers, like crazy stuff, even in terms of like, we track incumbency win rates at all levels of government, all the way down. And, yeah, like, the number of school board incumbents is like 15 percentage points higher that are losing in, in, in these conflict elections in particular, but just overall in general. And you have to add onto that because we also like just turnover in general, like, who, who is new coming out of the board? You think of all these school board incumbents who just don't run, they're, they're like, I'm up for reelection.
2021, 22 and 23 saw this kind of interesting, both people losing and people leaving, right? And so what I hope, right, and, you know, I know you guys are collecting this data, is that the, you know, the only way really to know these trend lines is to kind of continue to watch what happens. You know, based on what I'm watching in terms of the 2024 elections, it seems that school and education issues are going to continue to be high on, um, kind of at the national level in terms of campaign kind of ideology. And so I would imagine that those things are going to continue to play, you know, at the local level.
As we kind of touched on earlier, with, with talking about the pandemic, supercharging this attention being paid to these school boards and, and, you know, we just were talking about candidates being interested in running. You're also needing to consider the number of voters who are, who are paying attention to these, to these elections, which like, like we've said, is a hard thing to do, because like, like we just had our school board election in, in my school district last June and it was the only thing on the ballot. And since it's the only thing on the ballot, the, the school board itself, the district itself ran the election. I go in to vote at the, at the high school and it's just like a piece of printer paper with like two names and like checkboxes. Like, it's not even like a, a ballot that you fill out and scan, because like, they're just gonna flip through the, the papers and, and see who won. And, you know, the, the kind of this low, low attention can be exacerbated by the timing being not when people expect to be hearing about elections. But sort of what, what would your argument be as to why or, or how or why people should, should get more involved or, or be more focused on these, these school board elections with, with all these different topics in mind?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I will say that, I'll, I'll start by saying that these kind of off-cycle, off-term elections are really hard on voters, you know? Like, I think that there's a lot of evidence, um, that suggests that if we were to sync up vote, you know, elections, um, with other elections, right? So that as a Wisconsin voter, I think I get four ballots a year, pretty much every year.
Sure.
You know, I mean, and so, you know, I obviously take that seriously because it's my job, but like other people might just be like, I don't know, and.
I don't know any of these names or I don't.
Names, whatever, you know, we've made it harder here in Wisconsin to vote outside of election days, you know? So that also, I think diminishes the likelihood of people voting. And so it is hard, but I think in some, if there's one positive to the nationalization of elections is that I think people have, and, you know, what happened with COVID is that people have, I think, a better understanding of how, what your city and school board, uh, elected officials are doing has probably the most impact on your day-to-day life, right? Like, you know, what's happening with your kids in school.
My businesses are open.
Is my business open? What are the rules around that, right? And so I think people paying more attention is a positive thing. But I also think that there, and this is, I guess, you know, indicative also of probably what happened in 2022 versus 2023 in terms of the number of candidates running for office, is that it's hard to keep, keep, uh, attention high at all times. You know, I think we would, and then as a state benefit from, you know, saying that school board election should happen every other year or something like that, so that people get that break in terms of showing up to the ballot box and feeling like, you know, I gotta do this all over again.
And I will add that I, I find it personally kind of difficult sometimes to remember that most people don't spend eight hours a day, like, like just reading about and researching politics, just in terms of like that being my day job, like other people have other things to do. And, and it can make it hard to kind of keep, so, you know, I'll be sitting here like talking to my friend, I'll be like, how do you not know this? It's like, I don't know, dude, like, I've got other things on my plate, like, that's how I don't know, it's like, oh, well, that makes sense.
And I, I mean, one of, again, one of the things that I think, as a school board member pre-COVID, I think, you know, people in general trust the people that live in their communities to do what's best for their kids. You know, like my, you know, they know my kids go to that school. So obviously I'm invested personally in what's happening in that space. Or if you're a city council member, you live in that community, you're invested in making sure that place is like, you know, not falling apart. So in general, people like, I, I think the lack of participation pre-COVID wasn't necessarily because people didn't care, but they just trusted things, you know, to happen. COVID essentially like just flipped all that up, you know, and made people think like, well, wait a minute, that's not what I would do, right? City and school board officials had to make very difficult decisions with like very little information and, and changing information. And so, sure, things, you know, and again, in retrospect, we might have done things differently. And so it's kind of just trying to balance that there's this kind of greater participation, but is it a result of lack of trust? Or is it as a result of like, I'm more invested in what's happening?
Sure, sure, definitely. And then kind of the reasoning behind that participation can then kind of feed into,
Exactly.
You know, why are people running for office and, and kind of all, all this research that you've been looking into? Well, I mean, I, I, while, while I have you here, I, I do want to say, you mentioned Shorewood, you mentioned Milwaukee suburbs. As I'm sure you are well aware, the first presidential debate amongst Republican primary candidates will be taking place in Milwaukee like next month. But I mean, we, we just had a story in our Hall Pass newsletter, which focuses on like education, politics and policies, talking about some presidential candidate stances on education issues. And, and five candidates just a couple of weekends ago, um, Ron DeSantis, Donald Trump, Vivek Ramaswamy, Nikki Haley and Asa Hutchinson all spoke at the Moms for Liberty Summit in Philadelphia. So are you, is, is there anything that you are kind of keeping your eye out for or expecting to see in terms of the presidential election? You know, it's, it's kind of crazy to be like, oh, we're talking about school boards, which are these like, you know, like you said, like little tiny, like 2,000 people, political subdivisions, uh, that have like printer paper ballots, uh, at the high school and how it ties to the United States presidential election. But what are, what are you kind of expecting to see on that front or have you seen anything already?
I mean, I think, you know, Ron DeSantis and what's happening in Florida, like as a governor, you know, he has probably the, he can say something about how he has himself for his state approached what's happening in schools.
He had his parental Bill of Rights, uh, package, also endorsed a number of candidates in, in 2022.
And he's been very vocal about being, nobody's actually teaching CRT. So like, he's been pretty vocal though about, you know, I don't know, like essentially getting, like limiting
Diversity.
What kind of conversations can happen around race? But I think the hard part is the, all five of those candidates, and I think pretty much anybody running, running on the Republican ticket are going to have similar stances on this. I don't see anybody coming out and saying, oh, I don't agree with that. I also don't see any of them saying, oh, I'm not gonna even talk about it. Like, I wouldn't be surprised, given where Wisconsin is. Um, and, you know, in the Milwaukee suburbs, there have been some pretty significant shifts in what some school districts are doing around equity efforts. You probably know that the UW system has essentially said we, that they need to limit the amount of money spent on DEI efforts and potentially firing or reducing, you know, the number of staff involved in that. So I think, I'm guessing that conversation will come up. You know, I think, again, the Moms for Liberty is in, in many ways, an opportunity there for them to connect around this particular issue with a particular set of voters who, you know, care deeply about this issue.
Yeah.
To the voter who's listening to this, the president's really not gonna do anything about this. Like, they can talk about it all they want, but in the end, all education.
A lot of those decisions.
Yeah, all decisions are made at the state and local level. Like, there isn't, there's very little that somebody in federal office can do around this, but I'm sure that it's a great talking, talking piece for them.
Well, and, and I mean, kind of like what you were saying, like, if, if you're at a, at a, if you're at an event where you know everybody in the room is there because they're all part of this group, you might talk more on that topic than you would in just a regular stump speech to a group of voters at like a diner or something like that. But when, when we talk about a lot of these elections, one of the things that I've, I've been trying to kind of keep tabs on is, like, you know, we, we were just talking about presidential candidate, Republican presidential candidates and sort of their stances and their, and their views and their campaigns on these issues. Have you seen anything from, from the other side? Is it kind of, in, in observing these elections, starting in 2021, it kind of felt like one side was like coming out of the gate and the other side was kind of caught flat-footed. But have you seen anything from teachers' unions, more liberal organizations, democratic parties that are crafting a message around education as well to kind of, if you're a political party and one party is saying something, you usually want to have something else to say to avoid kind of being left in the lurch?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a great question. I think, um, you know, teachers' unions are an interesting factor here, because, you know, here in Wisconsin, Act 10 essentially really diminished their role, at least in one particular way. But I think they, I mean, if, if the parent kind of control is essentially a, a kind of the opposite of what, you know, this idea that teachers are like the ones, and teachers and the educators and the professionals, right? Are kind of the ones who should be making those decisions. And so I think they have a stance on that, um, and they tend to, again, endorse particular candidates, you know, and come forward that way. I, um, I do, I mean, I think your, your analysis of this is correct, though, that there's this, like, essentially that there was this kind of, uh, push against, you know, CRT transgender, and it was essentially a reaction on the other side of like, wait, wait, no, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like in 2021, you, you had like, it, like, everyone was so, it was great for our work, because everyone was so clear. Like, you talked about like people being more subtle now, they are certainly more subtle now, but in 2021, nobody was subtle. And everyone was like, I support this, I oppose this, I oppose that. Like, they were just saying it, and it, and it really was like, uh, you know, with, with critical race theory in particular, you know, if you had a candidate say, I oppose critical race theory, the response that you'd usually hear from the other candidate on the ballot was, that's not even in, in the district. But then, you know, you kind of see these sort of like conversations go off into two different realities where, you know, the candidate who says, I oppose critical race theory typically is yet not talking about the, that college level theory, but more so talking about, like, like what you were saying, like, just sort of in general, how race is, is taught in, in, in a school district. But then the other candidate is saying, that's not here, end of conversation. But then, yeah, it's just like so wild watching these like different.
And you know, you could argue, like, in some ways, they're just talking past each other, right? Because, you know, when I think about what is taught in school, right? I mean, like I said, in most K through 12s, you know, they're, they're not teaching things that are significantly, I mean, for better or for worse. They're not teaching things that are significantly different from when I was in school, right? I mean, it's not like, you know, things have changed that much, but, um, you know, like the push towards, I think, more inclusive classrooms, right? And this is again, like where you're like, it's so fascinating to me that the word inclusive has become.
Yeah, I mean, because DEI, we, we've said that acronym a few times, but that's diversity, equity and inclusion.
Right, like this idea that you would include people who are different, I don't know. I mean, I didn't, again, you would, I think probably even 10 years ago, people would say like, that's a non-controversial idea. But now it's very controversial, apparently, you know?
Yeah, it's definitely like what you were saying, like, meaning different things when you say, when you say different things makes, makes a lot of these conversations really, really difficult to have. I mean, before we wrap up, have you got any ideas on, on sort of how you can, you can have those conversations? May, maybe from your experiences in a school board? Have you had any interactions with people who might have been saying one thing and might have been hearing something else? Or, or, yeah, anything along those lines?
I mean, I think at the individual voter level, there's a lot of room for compromise and agreement, particularly at the school level. I, I think we would all agree that we want our kids to be successful. I think most people would agree they want their teachers to be paid a living wage. And, you know, that their, their kind of professional success is our children's success. And so, you know, I think that there's actually, there's places for agreement. And when, like, when we had conversations or when I had conversations with voters about, you know, inclusion practices or equity practices here, I think that people were imagining that we were, you know, something different, right? They're hearing that like, oh, that means you're gonna like.
It, it's like the, the information sort of vacuum.
Yes, exactly.
That you were talking about earlier, like, when, when there's less information out there, other things can kind of come, fill it in. It is, and until you have that one-on-one conversation that you actually.
Right, and just kind of clarify, oh, like, we used to hear people say like, you're gonna get rid of all AP classes. And I'm like, no, like, like, right, like, these are not the outcomes that are gonna happen. We're just suggesting more people take AP classes, I mean, we offer more AP, and they're like, oh. So I think that there's this misunderstanding that at the local level and at the voter-to-voter level, you know, you can address. But unfortunately, because. But unfortunately, because of the nationalization, right? Like, the ways in which presidential candidates are talking about this, right? To, to my earlier point about the fact that there's no news coverage of these local elections means that that's where people are getting their information and they're essentially superimposing that on what they see happening locally then. And so then it's just more work essentially to kind of deal with those miscommunications.
And I know that's one of the things that, that we're, we're here at Ballpedia trying to kind of facilitate. In Wisconsin, we, we covered this, this year, we covered every school board election in Wisconsin. Usually we have our, our limited coverage scope, but we covered every school board election in Wisconsin. We gave every candidate the chance to fill out our candidate connection survey. We're, we're tracking endorsements to ideally give people a better idea of who is supporting these candidates. So if you're a voter and you come to the page, you can see like, oh, you know, these groups support this candidate, these groups support that candidate. I can kind of get a better idea of, of where that candidate, candidate stands. But it's really the, I mean, the survey's the coolest part about that, the fact that, you know, you can be running in a, a tiny district in Wisconsin, but then kind of get your thoughts and, and ideas out onto, out onto our website for, for any voter to come see. And, and I will also add, I mean, the, the, I think probably one of the coolest things about this research that you did is that a lot of the conversations in the past couple of years about school board elections, I found have been pretty anecdotal. You know, a, a group can find one school board election that feeds into their narrative. Another person can find it because there's like 13,000 of them. You know, there's, there's so many different places you can look and kind of, oh, well, over here, this is happening. Over here, this is happening, like things like that. But I, I think that kind of the, the level of research that, that you've done here provides like a really good example of sort of how people could approach school board elections to get a better idea and kind of ma- make, make those conversations less anecdotal and more based on like what you're saying, trends over time, get a better idea on that front. And I think that's really awesome and thank you very much for, for doing that and for coming on today and, and sharing that with us.
Yeah, no, thank you for having me. And I mean, I guess, you know, my plug for Ballpedia is that, I mean, it's really, really
I mean, I'll, I'll plug Ballpedia, but if you want to, you can, please go right ahead.
Important, like to your, to, to your point about, you know, anecdotal versus like patterns, data, right? Like, it's important to look at kind of like the full landscape and to continue to have access to those things. And as you said, and as I know as well, like school board elections are so important and it's so hard to get the information. And so, I mean, thank you guys for continuing to do that because I think it's, you know, it's, it's just like a resource that, you know, academics like myself are interested in. But I appreciate that your goal is to make it accessible to everybody, you know? I just, it's really important.
Well, that's what we're here for and that's what we'll keep doing. And Parth, thank you for joining us again. And for our listeners, you can check out Parth's work and learn more about some of what we chatted about by checking out the links in our show notes. Make sure to subscribe to On the Ballot wherever you listen to podcasts. I'm Doug Cronizel and thanks for listening.